So let's call to order the Wednesday, February twenty two, twenty twenty four. Work session of the Lower Southford Township Board of Supervisors, if everyone could join me in the Fledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
First up on the agenda is a public comment period, if there is anyone who wishes to be recognized.
Quick question, I guess the county implemented a property tax rebate program. Volunteer for the NS, does the township need to do anything for that, or is that just strictly county?
That, that what was adopted is strictly county. I did receive the information through Joe or Wango at the fire company and actually got some information from one or two other municipalities, which I sent over to Joe, Joe's gonna look at that and hopefully make some sort of recommendation to us at a future work session. So the fire company members can utilize the county one without us doing anything. What I think this board would like to do is consider something that would then take care of the township portion of that. And we've also discussed, that's only for real estate taxes. Is there something we can do for possibly earned income tax, particularly since many of the younger firefighters don't own real property? So how do we give them some level of benefit?
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, moving right along, we'll take a motion to approve the work session minutes dated February sixth, twenty twenty four, and January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, pending any comment or review.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Moves in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posting nay. Motion carries. Public Works Director, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. Uh, just an update on some projects, the streetlight upgrade project, unfortunately, we have nothing new to report, so waiting for the last few fixtures to be installed. Uh, it was told hopefully by the end of the month.
Let's see, which month?
Exactly. Um, the public works in community center facilities. Uh, we finally have a concept plan that seems to be acceptable. Generally acceptable to the team. So we have CKS working our preliminary site plan so that Boyle can then do cost estimates for, for the project. We need all that so that we can then uh, put together costs for uh, for the grant application that we're looking at.
Is there a target date to put that in front of the board?
We don't have one yet, we really haven't discussed it, but uh, I would think once we, probably next month, the mid-month, uh, would be reasonable since they have, hopefully they'll have the uh, the site plan in the next few weeks and then give Boyle a couple of weeks to do their, their estimate.
Estimate numbers.
Yeah, exactly, so. Uh, I'll speak with them to see if they've got, feel any differently as far as timing. Uh, many side walk project, I've spoken to all three property owners regarding their assigned three locations, so uh, working on getting pricing from contractors to relocate their signs outside of the public right of way. Uh, slosher room garage rental, waiting for lease agreement uh, from the owner's attorney. Hopefully we'll have that sometime soon, so we can just try and move that forward. Uh, grants, the Green Lake Go, working on applications for the signal modernizations, this is both two grant applications, one for me and Maple, and the other for me and Huntsburg. Uh, an Arley grant, this is the bike lanes and uh, raised pavement markers. So evaluating resourcing options for any three, four of prior to that one. Uh, park cameras, uh, we have power now installed at Rife from the barn to the uh, to the pole. So the box is hung, uh, we're using the perfume and water should conservancies internet. So we're, we're picking back onto that, so we have connection to, to the system. So we're still waiting, I think we're waiting for the uh, the camera contractor to install the cameras, but that would be one more that we can check off the list. Uh, some department activities, had two snow events last week. Total of about ten inches of snow. First one was a plowing event and the second was just the solving event. Uh, in between, we've been doing a lot of tree work, uh, improving site distance, a lot of intersections where uh, either on state roads where our, our roads intersect state roads or um, just at, at intersections in general, also doing a lot of uh, removal of dead trees in our parks and long trails. So uh, keep chipping away at that, there's still a number of them that need to be removed, but we keep uh, we, we keep removing the, the red Xs that are out there.
One at a time, one at a time.
Working on some improvements at Raul Park, we removed a couple of, one dead tree, one tree that was kind of in the way. Um, we're relocating the fence, installing a new fence uh, around the playground. Uh, going to install some additional parking there because everyone parks on the grass, this is as you get closer to Maple Avenue, so we're just going to eliminate the grass and make it dedicated parking. Um, so then looking at some, an overall improvement plan for for that, maybe some tree removal, maybe some additional parking, just doing some things a little differently, try to get two-way circulation through the parking lot, right now it's, it narrows down right there where there's, where the pipe goes across under the, the parking lot, so working on a plan for that, so that we can present that to the park board and get taken up there and put and blessing on it, so. That is all that I have, if you have any questions, and Stephanie has an update. Yoda Road sidewalk project.
Just wanted to thank your, you know, crew for storm treatment, how did the Brian stuff work out?
Worked out well, yeah.
Again, appreciate it all, thank you guys too, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all set for me? Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, I hear you.
All right, great, um, so I'm here this morning to present uh, a proposal for the Yoda Road sidewalk, as you know, we received, or the township received the Greenways Trails funding grant um, last month, and we are pursuing uh, the Monaco twenty forty, which uh, we have a um, application draft all put together, so that'll be finalized in the coming week and submitted by next Friday. Um, so as a result, um, this proposal is for the final design slash construction administration portion of the project, if you recall, the initial phase was really for preliminary layout, topographic survey, we got pulled together the plan, so we know which direction it was moving, and now we're using all of that information to complete uh, the set of construction plans, as well as include uh, bid document preparation and construction administration uh, relative to the grant slash grants, if, if we're lucky. Uh, so moving forward, we'd like to be able to complete that final design, coordinate with property owners, put the bid package together, and we would anticipate um, doing that through the summer of twenty twenty four, within advertisement in the, in the fall, uh, and then a, a spring construction, which would fall in line with the grant timelines uh, nicely, so uh, with that, um, this is also consistent with the costs that we've pulled together for the Monaco twenty forty grant application. Um, this does serve as part of the match um, for the grant, for the Greenways Trails grant. And then, as I mentioned, I think previously, um, the local match plus the Greenways Trails fund serve as the match for the Monaco twenty forty grant application. Uh, so it is a bit of a puzzle, uh, but I think it's a, um, you know, coming, coming together, so I'm here to take any questions on the proposal.
Stephanie, I just had a quick question on the, the design. The proposal was fine with me, the, at the end of the uh, project towards Cult Road, you've got um, two lots that would end up with cheat walls that you're proposing possibly, is that just to avoid getting a grading easement onto their property, or is that to protect trees in that area?
Um, towards the intersection, it's really the grading, um, it's, it's to avoid, it's to avoid the grading, because there is a little bit of a slope there uh, to, to meet the grade of the sidewalk. Um, a small cheek wall, again, we may be able, we may be able to modify it, um, you know, once we get into the full final design and cut the cross-sections in that location, but we are expecting a, a small cheek wall in that location.
That was like, I was just wondering if it was, you know, if it's worth going to just talk to the property owners and just get a, a small grading easement, I, I know if I lived there, I might prefer to grit, to have it graded to the sidewalk rather than having the extra concrete help.
Yeah, and I, I think what we can do is, is certainly, as I said, when we cut the cross-sections, we can give both options, right, and we can really have a better understanding, um, of just how far back that would need to go.
Okay. Stephanie, I have two questions, um, one being, what happens with the paving? Uh, does that all get patched in, like, what is in the scope of work with that, or will that be analyzed as you, as you go with your design?
So with, so the, the paving down towards the area at Vernal, at the other limit of work, uh, because we're not proposing any curb modifications at this location. Mike, if you can scroll to the other end of the plan, um, there is a small section of curb and paving in that area, just because it's on the curb today. Um, so that'll be a, it'll be a pavement notch, we're not proposing any full overlay or anything at this point, um. It will just be notched into the existing saw cut and not, notched in at that location. Likely squared off, like, get that, that, that edge line, that's um, just under the words Yoda Road, um, of the dark gray, that, that little notch, that's just kind of signifying the edge of the existing pavement today. So that'll be squared off where that little notch is at seventeen plus there, uh, yeah, right. Move over one more, right up there. So, other than that, uh, that, that's it.
Second question, Ken. The other, the other, well, yeah, I'm still not a hundred percent sure on that, because I feel like the curbing down a little bit further um, towards where it intersects with Cult is like falling apart asphalt.
So no, I'm for curb, um, we do have plans to replace that part
Okay.
that's there, so we may incorporate a concrete curb
Okay.
along that, uh, that entire stretch. So we need to coordinate with Stephanie on, on that work as well, okay. And then lastly, the section um, on the other side of Yoder that goes on a cult, which is not on the map, it's not in the current scope, that's still on the radar of the Trails Committee, I believe, for a future connection, is that correct?
On the other side of Yoder, closer to Cult.
On the other side, Cult does, you know, it go to the opposite, right on Yoder and then left on Cult.
Yes.
I don't think it's on the map. But there's no sidewalk connection um, for about two hundred feet up old road on the other side of you.
Heading towards Frank, correct, yeah. Is that probably into the Frank?
Is that still on the radar?
It is.
If that was put on.
Okay, I mean, there's, there was one comment I had too, was uh, when we're gonna look at the future crosswalking there, it's, 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 we, now, because that's another obstacle for that.
It's a couple hundred feet, it's pretty long second, so.
But I mean, you probably get the ADA ramp in now, whereas it'll be easier to put the rest later for us. That's definitely something we can put on the radar or bring up out of the next Trail Committee.
Which is Monday.
On Monday night, so I'll add that to the agenda.
Add that to your notes, Ms. Butler, please.
I will.
And Stephanie, one last one, so you are not, oh, we're not doing a uh, concrete aprons and sidewalk through the driveway, they're gonna be paved, so it's gonna be a sidewalk tying into the pavement? For the driveways?
Um, we are showing on this plan just the driveway adjustment, we did talk about that though before, and when, I think what, once we get into the full detail, we can, we can do a concrete apron, we can discuss which would be preferable at that point.
I just, my own experience is just that, the transitions between asphalt to sidewalk over time become difficult, and it may be a cleaner connection for the property owners to have that as full sidewalk with an apron, and then just doing some driveway repair behind them, so, just from my experience.
I think on this plan, we were really just highlighting that those were the driveways, and we're that as an adjustment without specifying whether it would be an apron or asphalt. I actually do think in our cost estimate, we did include aprons.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, uh, can you go to Cult? I noticed that uh, crossing um, Yoder at Cult, there's a ladder style marked crosswalk. And I'd like to consider a ladder style crosswalk across Cult to connect those two ramps. And then if Doug does the uh, curb and concrete work at that corner, uh, a third crossing across uh, Yoder at that side, yeah, there you go. If we could, please, the sidewalk and uh, ramp are already in on that side, so it seems appropriate to me to put all three legs in now that we're, uh, there's just we good there?
Yep, got it.
And then if you go up to Vernal Lane, I'm a big fan, oh, yeah, go up. And then left, yeah. Instead of just two lines across the street, I like the ladder style crosswalks, I think it's better, I know it's a pain for Doug to paint, but from a driver's perspective, it screams pedestrian crossing, so I, you know, I favor, I sometimes favor the pedestrian, so that's all I had, comment wise, on the uh, on the uh, the plan itself. Uh, the only other thing about the contract that I noticed, or the proposal, was that the, the proposal was seven pages and the terms of conditions was eight pages. And so, so while I appreciate that, see, I, I have familiarity with that firm, and terms and conditions were one page once upon a time. But having said that, there are some terms and conditions that I don't think the township would be amenable to, so I'd ask Joe to send this over to Andy and Jim to have a look at, I have no intention of going to rest in Virginia to argue with you about a disagreement, if you follow what I'm saying, so. Anyway, there are some clauses in here that I think they are.
Especially pay the fifteen percent extra cap.
Yeah, well, having said all that, uh, just, let's have Jim and Andy, I think this is the first time we're seeing the new terms and conditions, so. All right, we may have to mark that up for future reference, that's all I have.
My only question I had, I think this echo, that's what Robert said, I did have a few questions in here, but I feel comfortable turning that over now, so, so there. Um, and with the Cult Road, I was also curious, as I alluded to earlier, sort of look at connecting that in the future, because there's people crossing there now, and you know, that's, they're gonna continue to cross there where there's a sidewalk, oh, it's walking sidewalk, especially as we get closer to events like family or fireworks, uh, you know, any kind of baseball, soccer events, we're gonna have a lot of traffic there.
We could, so, so let's have Steph put that on as a specific line item in our meeting on Monday, let's, let's have the group take a look at it. Or, or we.
Separate project, right, yeah. Then the only, two. The only question I had, I know Steph that have talked to, you know, particularly the one with the closed sidewalk, which was good. Um, after, you know, have we notified all the owners that this is in discussion? And if we haven't, will we do that? I would want to find out, you know, the early stages as well.
So there's, there's two items in the Monaco twenty forty grant application, Doug, that you and I have to talk about this week, um, or close the loop on, and one of those was a property owner notification letter, which we did draft a informational letter at this point, saying that the grant was awarded and the project is proceeding into final design. Um, it was um, basically just an update of the status at this point, which would be sent to the property owners within the project limits, and I, I'm have been gone for a few days, so I just need to catch up and make sure that either, if, if that's the decision to send that letter out, we need to do that this week, so that we can reference that in the application. And that would be one of them.
And see the Mayhews again, let them know, because I think their request initially was, just keep us in the loop, so a personal touch there, since we, we're literally on their doorstep.
And that, and obviously that would be great if they have any, any say on that as well. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions for?
Subject to. I make a motion to approve the contract subject to attorney review and the other comments made in the meeting.
I'll second. Moves in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Police Chief, standing, Mr.
Good morning, as you know, Chief Ben was not in today, so I'm here to fill in.
Got the eighteen today.
Uh, just want to reiterate what Doug said regarding uh, the report camera, uh, that really is ago, they're just waiting for the subcontractor to come in and do the install.
Any ETA on when they're gonna get in there?
No, we're gonna find out.
Okay.
Uh, but they're looking at uh, three to four cameras with one PTZ camera there, or entire area, which will be nice. Uh, one of the things.
We can watch the plan.
Uh, bid closed uh, on unison bid for some tires, they were sold, some were new, some were used. Uh, so yeah, the highest bid was six hundred pounds, plus. Worth, I thought we were gonna get. And then the last thing is uh, an update on Purple Buck. Um, he was out since August with the surgery. Uh, surgery pleaded, came back uh, as of February fourteen. Was released from modified duty, in fact, full duty. Uh, however, he's not exactly where he wants to be. I'm sorry, he's gonna deal with it for as long as he can, and see if it's something he can work with, and potentially reevaluate in the procedure. That's all I.
Understood. Any questions for Cory? Thank you Cory, thank you Cory. All right, next up, uh, Mr. Bukey, building and zoning.
Chairman, so far this month, we have thirty-nine building comments, five of those were new dwellings at the high point that suffered new permits issued, so that we can. Right now, we do not have any zoning hearing board applications for Mark. Upcoming in the planning commission, we have the, a presentation for the walkable letter on feasibility study, so we're finally seeing the, the end of that process occur, so uh, presentation to the planning commission for that. One ninety-six Main Street conditional use discussion at the, at that planning commission meeting also, and discussion of several ordinances, so we have, in the winter, we typically like to reignite ordinance discussion. So far, I don't think that any one of the ordinances are ready for consideration to advertise or adopt, but we're discussing them. And so it includes stormwater management ordinance, park ordinance, what, small wireless communication facility ordinance, and restaurant parking ordinance. And some of those are updates based on based on current events and, and, and legal precedents in the small wireless communication facilities threatened by our solicitor's office, and some of those are, are taking a look at potentially antiquated sections of our ordinance as it pertains to current development that's happening, and just trying to address something for where you did, for the township. Oh, I can go through and, and discuss if you guys have any questions regarding, do you have some of that information? Um, if you could discuss it now, or if you can just wait until it's through the planning commission? You know, it's up to you.
I'm waiting, they're gonna weigh in on different comments, so.
Okay. So tomorrow, you'll have the sign ordinance amendment considerations stop, and then potential.
Tomorrow, it's a week, a couple weeks, two weeks.
I'm sorry.
The next week.
So at the March sixth meeting, and depending upon how it goes, the upcoming planning committee may have the authorization to average, the one eighty-six, maybe their mission.
Thank you. Hey, Mike. Moving on, any other questions for Mike, wow, we're on building zone. All right, uh, Mr. Jakowski.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, one item on the management report is actually farming activities on conscious open space, we recently uh, heard from one of the farmers who is act, well, has been actively farming uh, some of the town here property, saying that he is, he is no longer going to be farming the property. Um, he has someone he would like to bring in. Um, not a resident farmer. Uh, so Holly uh, would like to discuss with you, she's kind of a coordinator for the farming activity. You know, how we move forward with this kind of situation, whether we want it to be a, that we like, prefer it to be a township resident, or do we continue with uh, the situation we have now, the, the farmer that's going away was not a township resident, but had been farming that previously, when it was the private owner before the township purchased it, so we've just.
Which property is this?
It's the, it's quite a bit of land, actually, um, it's the land that's along LeRout Cross Road. Um, there's a chunk right across from the golf course at Schlosser, and um.
It's adjacent to the.
Yeah, and then there's a chunk on Lukon.
Sure.
Um, there's a total of
Get back.
Yeah, there's a total of eighty, eighty-some acres that he farms. And he's farmed it from the beginning, I spoke with Mary West. That is why he's been farming it for over twenty years. Due to health reasons, he will, he has actually um, considered using someone who is um, I, I'm not even sure how you would describe it in the farming community, but it's a company called Howger Farms. Um, a gentleman named Gary Hoover owns Howger Farms or Hoover Farms, and they have farmed it for him in the past.
Is this guy completely getting out of farming, is he?
Yes, yeah, completely, completely. Um, I did have a voice message from Gary Hoover from Howger Farms two weeks ago, I called him back, left him a message, I haven't heard back from him. The biggest reason we, I mean, I, we have two other farmers that farm our township property that have come to us previously, every year basically, and said, if there's additional farmland available, will you please let us know? So the question becomes, is it something that we want to keep it within our township orders when it comes to the actual farmer? Um, or are we okay with, you know, someone else outside of our township farming the land? The other thing is too, since there are two other farmers who have both inquired about additional space, how do you decide or split it up, or what do you do? If we decide to keep it within township or residence?
Yeah, I know that in the past, we've, you know, been very supportive of trying to maintain at least some farming in our community, and using our open space, which we don't charge anybody to farm, has been one way of helping to support that, as development pressures have made it harder for them to continue to keep you know, consolidated farming operations. I think that our best, I mean, in my opinion, would be that it should be, if we're gonna do it at no charge, to continue, what is the public benefit, if you will, of maintaining farming and agriculture in our community, it should be by the farmers who do reside within the community and operate farms in the community, which I believe we're talking to Nichols and Schwartz and Barry, correct? Um, you know, to the second point, it may be a discussion with Barry and, and the Nichols of you divide it in half, I mean, because they are different parcels, it's not one large parcel, you know, you could split it reasonably, or have them work out what's reasonable based on their operations, um, and have them propose a plan to us as well, but I think that would be my sense, I think if we're gonna start leasing it out to people outside of the community, we would need to then establish lease rates, I mean, there are agricultural lease rates for what you pay per acre profitable. Um, and that would be, you know, if, if Nichols and Schwartz didn't want to do it, that would be something we would, I, I think we would have to establish policy on for the future.
Right. And I, and I believe that he's more of a commercial farmer.
Yes.
Yeah, that is, that is.
He is, yes, he has claimed to me that he's already fertilized those fields for this year, so do we give him one more year and then say?
Oh, did he give a sign lease, did he give a sign lease?
Brian does, but now this. No sign.
Ah, yeah, that's his residue that they fertilized.
I, I share some of this. Kind of in here, I, I think it's wonderful, and I think we should absolutely continue to try to farm our land, how we do that does seem to make sense, try to keep it within the township, and yeah, I see the same way, parks, we keep moving for everybody, obviously, but you know, I think farming, I think what you said, sensible, it makes sense to stay in the farm, like, if the, or stay in the township.
I agree as well.
Okay.
Um, I think the only question we would have, just to bounce off that too, is again, how do we divide it, if they want to have a discussion on it, and can do it amicably, and come back to us, and there's our last, there's my.
This meeting dissolves so.
If it comes to us. If we reach out to them and they. Meaning Barry and. Daryl. And they say, you don't want to do it. Yeah, how do you want us to proceed with looking at?
Yeah, but we would, I would expect.
These rates paying for it.
Yeah, there's another, I don't know. Steve, you want to form anything else? But I, I think that's really, I mean, we have to, I mean. Actively doing it and then as time goes on. You know, as they get older, that may change, but I think we should have an established policy then that, you know. And when you get into a commercial farming, there are people who do this much larger.
That's what they're.
They would reasonably expect to pay for the, so we should, you know.
That Brian does pay for a portion of. The property that goes into Skipback Township that's adjacent to our open space, Skipback. Um, a, a private resident owns it. He totally pays eighteen hundred dollars to lease that space to farm it during the year.
I have, um, a farmer that's, we have property, our company owns down in Douglasville. And we, you know, it's not a huge amount, but it's for about eighty acres and it's about five thousand dollars a year. And they're also responsible for all of the maintenance, being rights of way, trees down, any of that stuff is all on them as well. So. Perhaps in the future, if we lease it out too, put a little note in there to donate to the local pantry, some of the.
Yeah.
helpful things as well. But we could have our local people as well, but recommend it.
So having said that, yeah, I think, uh, first and foremost, we wanted to continue to farm. I mean, and. That's paramount, I think, to us and to the rest.
Good use of the open space.
Correct. And then secondly, to the extent we're able to keep it within the township residents, I think that would be secondarily prime, prime, yeah, it's a primary. And then thirdly, if, if not, then we'll deal with the commercial and the culture rates.
I'll contact Darrell and Barry and.
And if they're gonna have a conversation about who's doing what, they, I don't think it'd be the worst thing in the world to be in front of the park board or.
Yep.
You know, let, let these, so there's an understanding somewhere on the record that this. Occurred amicably.
And do Daryl or Barry have actually pieces for any of the properties that they have?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, fine. No, no, I'm saying the land that they farm of ours.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Fine.
Yeah.
Fine, we don't currently have an active.
It's the thirty first of the, of December every year and then they get new paperwork at the beginning of January.
Ryan has not chosen to sign that new paperwork, so that's where we're in this. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Thanks, Joe. Anything else?
Nothing further.
All right, any need for executive session this morning? All right, very good. With that, I.
Ask one question here. No, I noticed we had somebody on Zoom, but I just had a question. I know we've discussed Zoom before, what our official status is. Last month's agenda, which I still have in here, I noticed is in-person meeting via Zoom for zooming purposes, only no participation. I'm just curious what exactly our status would be. We said before that could be discretion of the chair. We've said publicly, we're okay with having some participation. And we could really make a vote now and say that Zoom can be a participation. Just like any other meeting and somebody identifies themselves. I wanted to have a quick, if we can, a quick discussion on it, cause I just noticed somebody here, noticed this and. I think we should not miss, this kind of be misleading. If I read this, I'm gonna think, well, what's the point? If I can't make it to the meeting, why log in? No participation. I'll just watch it on YouTube. Honestly, that's probably what my mindset would have been. So I think we should have some kind of clarity. And, I mean, I'd like to make a motion that we can have, or I'd like to make a motion that we can have access on Zoom for. People just as we put in the audience. For every meeting on Lower Southwood Township. That would be on that.
I was about to second it and then you added. Well, I, um, I mean, I think it's without, it's in the discretion of the chair. We try to leave it to each board. On that, I think that what I would be agreeable to would be, uh, participation at the discretion of the chair. I could. Individuals getting on to ask questions is one thing. If we have a, uh, very hot topic where there's three hundred some odd people. That can be very hard to manage between a in-person and a Zoom meeting. So I think we have to have some discretion as to how that gets managed. For a meeting like this, and if Mrs. Woodbury would have, would like to make a comment, I would, I mean, my own personal take is I would have absolutely no issue with that because. It, it's manageable. There, I have been involved in meetings where it is not manageable and it devolves into chaos and that's not. How a public meeting should be running.
I agree, we have to watch out for chaos. At the same time, I would think it would be easier to manage online as we had mentioned before, we can hit and view. We can do that. Whereas here, we can keep it in that gap. I haven't seen proof I've been here, but. To an extent, then you have an audience, you know, so I think it is arguably more manageable. Online. Now, a discretion of the chair comes down to, okay, well. Am I gonna be able to speak this time? What's the chair gonna do? You know, that's where it kind of runs that heavy. That's why I would say all meetings that be public. Like the planning commission, that's online. So if someone's there, they have a question. Do we have a question? No. Usually in our, you know, we have some people, the only people who've talked is. Like us, like I haven't been on Zoom, but I know Mr. Chairman, you were on Zoom a few months ago. It's convenient to have.
Right, but you have to understand, even before we had Zoom, we had conference calls where folks who couldn't be here, we had a phone where you could call in. So that concept isn't that form. Uh, particularly for board members, where, where it becomes problematic is you have a number of people on a topic that's. Contentious or, uh, in- involving a lot of, uh, a lot of. The public and then how do you manage that online? And frankly, it's, it's just not something that can easily be done. So, and, and if, if folks want to come in and make a comment, they're certainly welcome to come to the meetings. If they want to email us, we're, you know. Getting, communicating with this board and, and the staff is about the easiest thing on the planet to do. So to suggest that this is the somehow the tipping point, I, I, I'm just not there.
I, and I, and I agree and I, I know that I feel very strongly that of everybody on this board. I know all you would say, oh yes, make a comment, no problem. And I've seen that. I just think that with the wording that we have, and that could be misleading. If I read that says no participation. Well, now I don't know whether as a resident, I'm able to say something or not. And if it means that somebody can log in and just say, hey, I live right there on Yoder. This is my take on that. That's helpful for us. That's, that's why I just want to make sure that people don't have that confusion. So do we write? Participation based upon. You know, the chairman, so they, it's kind of a crap shoot each time. How will we word that? That's, that's just what I'm trying to see is, I want the residents to know that they have that opportunity because we do feel. Or at least tend to. Would, would you be more comfortable with that motion? Without saying every meeting or it's just.
Ken, what are your views?
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna say I'm, I'm uncomfortable with potentially putting Mike in a position or the chairman in a position to mute. People out if it becomes contentious. Or there's some sort of an argument going on. You're then muting out that voice. I don't think there should be an expectation to speak from Zoom. I, I. Only because of that reason.
One could argue the same, though respectfully. What if somebody hears something who, you know, it gets contentious? That's part of our job description, whereas. People are gonna say something and we have to listen and find a way to.
Right, but it's in the.
Well, but it's also. We can ask them to stop talking here. They can keep talking. You have the power just to stop. I mean, we, we completely, but, but that's not, that's not great either because that doesn't play well.
Yeah.
I think in, if it got obscene, well. Like we did before, where that was obvious. I, I think at least we should let the general public know that they have an opportunity, you know, cause to me, reading this, that says, well, there's no point in. Being no participation. I bother, just watch it on YouTube at that point. Cause that's all you'd be doing lifetime. Might as well sit and eat with your family. That's just the way I see.
I'm just thinking if there's like thirty people that happen to log in.
Yeah.
For that meeting. And then Mike would then be faced or whoever is running the Zoom. With what order to take those comments. And how to manage them and or potentially mute them. If they all try to speak at the same time, that's not gonna, that's not gonna work.
It's kind of.
From, from experience, I know that you can have everybody muted. They can raise their hand and you unmute each one in order. There's, I mean, you look at any meeting. You know, you could, there's other meetings that do it. There's other townships at the. School districts, Philadelphia, like if you watch a meeting, they go on for hours, they raise their hand in orderly fashion, X. You have X amount of time. We haven't set times. I'm not saying set times. I just think it's an obvious thing that we could do. If the board doesn't want to feel that way now, that's fine, but. I think that by putting no participation, that sets something that. Where in the past, yeah, sure, go ahead and say something, you know, and we have been accepted to that, but that says no, you can't say that.
I think that said that. Since we've, I mean, that is a new language.
No, it's, it's in our. Yeah, we discussed at the beginning of the year, sure, we can have. Patient. That's why I'm just really asking. And again, I'm open to ideas. How do we want to proceed with this? Obviously, I'm all okay with having people communicate there, but if we don't do that, maybe we should say.
You're, you're suggesting that we don't want people to communicate. That is not, that's what you exactly said. Having seen things in these meetings that are, that really are troubling, at least to me. And that's a good example right there. We, this board is very receptive to communication. We have emails, you can call the staff. You can, you know, participate by watching these meetings online. There, there's no, no. Regard for, you know, casting away people with ideas and comments. So. I, I just, it's really troubling. And you, you said something the other day about, you know, we don't take people, uh, as volunteers depending on where they work. And that, I have to tell you, that's brought me the wrong way for about two months. So, so be careful with the language that you use. And, and mean, and, and say exactly what you mean. That, that, that would be helpful. So what you're saying here, I think, is you'd like to have people participate to a, to a greater extent than they're already allowed to participate on Zoom. That, that, that's kind of what I'm hearing. And if I'm wrong, you can correct.
I'll correct you. Um, first, I'm gonna replay the YouTube because I don't know where I said that you guys were not receptive of hearing people. In fact.
Just edit about thirty seconds, forty seconds ago.
Chairman, I typically said, I know that you guys are perfectly okay with having people read that. When I read this, that says no participation on this agenda, which you can see. It just causes mixed messages. I specifically said that I know the staff doesn't feel this way. And then I said, well, caution, at least I don't feel that way, but I'm sure that you guys also feel that way based upon previous actions. What can we do to make it obvious for the residents? But in no way did I indicate that you didn't feel that way. But again, you can indicate you don't feel that way by just being, vote right now as well to say, hey, anybody can speak. Well.
I think that's where it's. I, I. My personal preference and maybe age, and I'll fully admit that. I've been around local government for a really long time. Local government works great when people are involved and they participate in person. I, I believe that. I think that Zoom is a wonderful way that we bridged a gap due to a pandemic and thankfully it was there. It's now an opportunity for us to inexpensively televise our meetings, which is, a lot of communities have done that. To great expense prior to COVID, utilizing much more high-tech technology. But that was not a two-way participation. That was a one-way participation. And this was a way for us to augment that. I think that there are times, meetings such as this, there's really not a whole lot of hot topic issues. If someone had a question they wanted to throw us, I'd be perfectly hu- open to someone saying to it because it's easily manageable. In my own professional experience, I've sat at meetings where there were three hundred people on a Zoom meeting. And watched it devolve into, how do you keep track? Who's talking? People are talking over each other. People in the audience are trying to talk when someone's on Zoom. And it becomes very difficult and that is not a great thing. And what we're dealing with are hypotheticals because right now we have very few people who are attending our meetings. I don't think we've discouraged anybody from doing it. But we have very little attendance. So that's why this could work with participation. But hot topics blow up and we, we've been through them and that becomes, it's difficult to manage when they're in person, let alone having two components to it. So. My own feeling is we just have to be careful to go down the path of opening it all the way up without thinking through how we handle it when other circumstances take place. That's all.
So I guess my suggestion would be, do we want to keep no participation on there or at the discretion of the chair? Cause again, that was really all I was saying. I never said that you guys didn't want people to speak. In fact, I said the opposite, that I know you feel differently, but this is misleading. And I would like to see, you know, does the board agree that maybe we should put at the discretion of the chair? Is that still the?
Well, it's not misleading. There's no participation online. So we don't, but misleading would be if you put at the discretion of the chair and he says no participation when you call in. Oh, well, I would have been there if I, if I knew I wasn't able to talk. So it, it can be misleading. If you put the second, the, the phrase you want to put in there. If they know they can't talk on, on the screen over there, then they gotta come in. If they want to say something. Uh, that's my feeling. You saw what happened when it got hijacked. They put three hundred people on here who want to talk, gets hijacked again. Gotta shut it down. None of them get a, get a voice. They should get here.
I'm not quite comfortable making that decision, but so.
Well, I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any else? For the good of the order. Very nothing. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
He's always.